Is my password?
It's not, it's not good, is it really? Yeah, just need one more. Ben has spoken to John. Hello.
Elaine.
Michael to here.
Hello, Thomas. Good evening. I'm Mike Marsh. I shall say mask, adding an R.
Mask, it's mask, it's not mask, it's mask.
Interesting. If there are actual college committees.
Is it sort of simple like ours or is it more complicated?
Well, it easily isn't. So it's primarily designed to be exactly what it would have been. It's designed 1700s in March. You know, we didn't have the ability to vote quickly and elections weeks and weeks and weeks to vote. And all this. And it is nice as well to kind of balance power from a larger state towards a state. You get the idea of having electoral college voters who go and vote for the president and then that individual state votes for them. But it is not system because it is a directly elected position. You're voting for your electoral college member who will vote in the college within determines the president.
And it's not even as easy as that because if you win a state, say, Windsor has 12 folks in the electoral college. Most of them, this is if you say you get one.
Some may do that, but I don't think you would vote for that.
I'm sorry, others break it down. If you win a counting, you get one vote.
All right.
So you three split 13 and seven.
Please do you want to bring up the question? There's also an interesting part which is called the Interstate Voting Pact. Basically, they're trying to storm the electoral college and beat itself. So you end up with the direct elector, the ends of the interaction. Because they'll just turn around and they'll do it on states when they hit the mark on their duty. They'll just all say, we'll give all our votes to that candidate. And every state will say, in effect, by default, you end up just circling voting.
We get the sort of situation where people, well, Hillary Clinton, they've just got, they've got the most.
Yeah.
We are, everybody here is accounted for. And we are ready to go, okay? Harry, can you hear us? No, I can't hear you. Can you hear me? But can you hear me? Like what we need for my name. Yeah, thank you.
Quite short start then. Yeah, as it's 1984. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the final mission of 20th Prop. 2020. So imagine the operation T herees, like the headline stream is familiar with the left's operation T. Let me with all the colleagues. Obviously filming according in mind of everyone's vote for the 2014 position meeting. More will be filmed or recorded by town halls and public. And town halls aren't filming yet, but other people might be on it again soon. So item one, the submissions from the public, and we don't appear to have any submissions from the public outside. I know the public present, but do you have anything you want to say potentially? You know, I take that as a no submission from the public, item one. So we have item two, which is receiving the budgets for absence. And by this time from the part, we ordered our absence apologies from Ed Rose, Franklin and Elaine. And nobody else. So if anybody else has to chip in, anybody who may not be here.
That's everybody counts.
Wait, sorry, I see you don't have a minute. What are your submissions, the way you actually attended the meeting?
Monday, unless do you for the minutes on chat?
Operation for numbers included from that, item two, item three, do you have any? Nobody's called the handle on Zoom, nobody's called the room. Item four is an announcement for the chair. I don't really have any announcements, but I just want to say, you know, thank you for attending today and attended by Zoom. Understanding all the pressures and problems that COVID is giving everybody in their personal lives is an inconvenience result. But, you know, thank you for being here and taking part.
Welcome back, Rachel.
Oh, yeah, and sorry, welcome back from Rachel. So we've done interviews, haven't we, Rachel? Yeah, the most important thing, the most important thing is this welcome back, Rachel, who has returned to work after the absence. And we're all very happy to see her. So item five is the government's meeting held on 19th August 2020, as per that record. I've seen everyone dressed in it in their own time at home. We have a proposed report next. Michael present, also remember Tony and Michael seconded. And all those in favor for next?
I'm in favor, but I can't work out how to put the handle. Okay, right, what's one, two, Michael, yes, you are three, or five in favor?
Against the positive reaction at the bottom of your screen, Harry?
Yeah, oh, reactions, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I chose that one. So it's five in favor, abstentions.
And everything.
Thank you very much. In your machine, thank you, sign the date of last debate, please.
I've been got leave ahead.
That's fine.
I don't mind my free hand because I'd like to. No, it's fine, I'll just use it, same time, same phone. Just write the date on the computer data. Actually, I meant to make you here when Rachel joins to say something in chairs now to decide to list the way for it. And there's no answers, mate.
This should already be good for her, she said, yeah.
Nothing out of the ordinary here. So six is still matters arising from meetings in California. Obviously, that's not going to help me, I'm not being a gentle, big, obvious fellow. Skip over that one. Item seven still matters in post-hospital response to prevent the weathering to create a pandemic. I don't think you've got any.
No.
Present next is still about the right to make still calling financial matters in April 1, which is 2019. One income center project of autumn here, the VA, which is obviously more agenda.
You have to bear with me if you ask questions because I can't hear people very well. Do you want me to go through it or just give a summary of the first couple of pages for the current income and expenditure?
Well, I'm happy you see what everyone's all coming to doing, so if you want to go through it, go through it. You can't see the summary for summer.
I did make a few notes, so rather than sort of going through everything in detail, which would seem to change as the year goes on. So a quick summary features one and two, which is the current income and expenditure situation. Is that, yeah, we're on target for the income, even slightly above the budget that we could make adjustments in June 2020. Specifically when hiring comes in sight, which reduced by eight of three, just say eight of two and a half thousand due to closures and cancellations. But at the same time, we're on track with that. I think that was the best move that we could have made and the figures seem to be realistic. The expenditure appears to be stable across all sectors at 46.3% at the moment. So I think the changes that we made in June really paid off. And so that we could fit that into the forward plan sort of going forward. I did a full review after coming back. I went through all the accounts and everything and all the minutes since I was out, getting everything up to date. And going through the accounts, I've got quite a few budget changes to be made for the current financial year. So there are my from page three and four. This is directly linked to the income and expenditure schedule. So how I actually came about determining which budgets needed to be changed. It was literally going with the budgets that we had initially after June 20. Having a look at the performance stage for both the income and expenditures. And you have got an income and against expenditure schedule linked in with this report. So any budgets that I, the comments in this report have been highlighted and think in that income against expenditure report. I can go through those one by one if you want. Or you have to manage the public account page to go through page by page. I just asked about the computer support.
I'm sorry.
I can't hear, so I'm really sorry.
I guess that the B C on page four, the favorite call, I can wait. G C, what's that? G C says, I don't see anyone on the board. That's fine, I just, I can make out G C then.
I'm sorry about the computer support. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, what was that about? So I did get involved in June because obviously when I was first out, the patent clinic wasn't around. So I did work on sort of budgets and things back in June. But I didn't have the time to actually, or probably the ability to actually go through and individually look at all the entries as I'm going through, how they were allocated within our account. So part of getting to where we are today, I have moved around quite a lot of money that had been allocated to budget that I wouldn't apply them to. Now, the computer support was one of them. And at the same time, the budget had to go up because we have had pen working and things like that going on. So it did impact rather. Yeah, okay. So I wouldn't have produced, if everything had been allocated as I, as it should. It would have actually completely differently and I didn't have produced that budget at that time. So basically, it's reversing what was done back in June and adding a little bit more to allow for the home working. Yeah, yeah, okay, absolutely, thank you. And the street maintenance, that gone up by 7,000. And it says that we have reversed June reduction following new agreed contract and new roundabout enhancement. Yes, so there was a new contract agreed and it wasn't until I could actually go through and read all the minutes and everything. But I saw that a new contract had been agreed that had gone up by paramount. And at the same time, council had agreed. That was coming through last year, but it hadn't sort of fit at that point before I was out. So the roundabout enhancements, there is an additional 10,500 in the year. So the budget and it was agreed with council before I was out that the budget would stay at the level that they were before I was out. And then as soon as I was back, it would be looked at again. And really, this is putting everything back into the position that it should be. So basically, the increase is, yeah, two and a half thousand of it is roundabout enhancement that went from the original budget. It was, I think that was strategic planning. So it was in the pipeline, but council did not agree to it at the time. And we did have a new street maintenance contract that I noticed was agreed, but didn't speak the amount as well. Okay, thank you. And do you know who that contract is with? It's the Ambiance's next show. I'm on my insurance one, that was great. Okay, thank you.
How many do I have? You changed that budget, you don't have to pay him the 18%. The what was talking about is we had spent two and a half billion on two renovate, which obviously was a contract that we were to place. It was a ridiculous contract, but there was no allow to actually go through, head it sat away to put a net. What I was just wondering was, who was the rest of the money for?
Again, it was.
That's a runaway purchase contract. We've got straight amazing. Right, so why are we increasing that budget? I understand you're not saying that, but how do you mean we were?
No, it's a combination, it's the two and a half thousand. It's an increase from the Ambiance contract that was agreed whilst I was out as well. And again, due to items being applied to a different nominal code. When I actually went in and moved item back, it has three expenditure levels out and adjusted things. So we did actually clash the budget from round about 8,000 in 18,000 in June. And so it's purely reversing it again, it's just where entries have been put to different nominal codes.
We push the, what are, how beautiful landscape we took for this extra night? They're not doing the job right now. You know, they're not cutting the edges, they're not doing any digging in and they're even on a grassy. It's that, and why are we, why are you? Look really fat center again. Because I think they're doing a part of a good job for them. I think what you're saying is, I don't, I'm not going to agree obviously with what you're saying. Isn't that a bit, massive for a good time? Because all we're doing with the money around is moving forward with 32. So the moment accidents and others have gone up and things have been charged to the wrong page, it's like, wow. So quite rightly, right to say, the mechanism of us saying going from 11 to 18, what we've agreed, feeding other agencies and where this might get well at the start of the season. So shouldn't we take that as a discussion point to, like, for council? So you could do as far as the quality of the work is concerned. But even with the budget, they've not done a good job alone. Why are we looking to increase the budget for it?
That very long affects three-year contract. It's what, what Rachel was saying, we're not increasing the amount of money we're giving Ambiance. It's just as friends says, the budgets are being readjusted to.
Lack of increase.
No, 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 because they've got their fixed contract, which was agreed up in April. Yeah, but that hasn't been counted for in the original budget.
I like what you're saying, it's totally, but I don't think we need to. So I think this needs to be the trigger for that conversation to say, come on, we're at the full council. Because that, for them to say, in the totality of our costs, as a council, you'll have a certain provided for about 18,000. For that 18,000, they're to meet our current legal obligations essentially. We've got to move the money around to say, it's there. Yeah, legal obligation for it. So we're not increasing the money, we're just consolidating the budget. So if anything, I think what Rachel's done for us is clearly brought out how much we're sending there, which then enables you to have a point of view as you've got, I know you said. So I think for a full council in our session, we should be Ambiance, I'd say, concerned by, I'd say.
And it was actually, I think, she, maybe the, I went for the information on the Pfizer reports here. The Ambiance contract was actually 12,220, is that right, Rachel? Five zero four zero. Yeah, I'll carry on. This is going to make people laugh. I've got a map. Where my eyesight has been affected a little bit, they say temporarily, but we'll see. It's on page six. Yeah. Five zero four zero. Yeah, June, we reduced the budget down from 18,000, second pension 46, to 11,000. And that was based on the year-end figures from the last audit. And also the figures that were shown in stage at that time are accounting system. But I wasn't in a position to go through at the time to go and look at it. Then, yeah, so the roundabout maintenance, two and a half thousand hadn't been allowed for. Ambiance contract was pretty careful. Yes, 12,220 was agreed by chairs in March 20. Previous three-year fixed rate contracts had ended, so that was agreed by chairs during lockdown when, so I'm guessing it's done by emails because it had to be renewed. It was done through the coronavirus action plan delegated.
Oh, we agreed a contract, three years in that action plan.
What do you mean? That was one of the ones that went to.
I know I was a chair then, is that right? No, that's all I've seen that. I'm just a bit surprised that we decided.
But I don't think it was a massive increase. I think the problem is, Tony, that walking it a bit, other than your sort of views on what we're actually getting for our money from that supplier, was that back in June, we moved the budget down because we were just trying to flush everything that we hope, not knowing how bad, you know, we would be impacted. That was one that was shaped back and it shouldn't have been. Now, we're a couple, so this is just flooring it to where it should have been.
You actually, during the COVID period, weren't able to check that I actually had cut the branch?
I wouldn't know.
No. I think that's what we've got to call a council. If you consent back to service division from the supplier, we have some kind of rapport or something on the service division. No, I think you're right, I mean, one just being a loan debt, no, it's.
I think the point has to be made, Chair, that if we just pull the plug off this contract without anybody coming in behind to do it, it's going to be, area is going to look quite a mess for the weeks it's going to take in the new contract in place.
Well, yeah, and they're going to get, but just keep that a screen there. Well, are we all right to move on from that one now? We can take that in a discussion for a fact of four for that one? Does anyone else have any questions for Rachel regarding what you've already discussed on pages three, four? Another one on page six, the cleaning contract.
We're coming on to that separately. This is just budget changes for now, just on pages three and four, and that's up to the current year. And what you're talking about, the cleaning contract, that's just highlighting something that council needs to bear in mind when stacking the future budget, because we've got no information on that yet. I'm just highlighting areas that may impact in the future.
Rachel, do we actually, I'm sorry. The sum of the old budget, the budget, the sum of the new budget, the changes we're making, what that is in total?
The total total.
No, just the changes we're making on pages three and four.
Well, income you'd have to take out because the first page, 4009, that's just training. And that was just a small one where we know that we are going to have some initial stuff. So I'd also then have to take out reserve, so just go with me. But we are wrapping budget a bit, so we have to take out strategic, sorry, reserve. And we also have to take out the, by being able to get down to the basic expenditure budget. So we're wrapping from 288,906 to 231,225. That was me adding it up very, very quickly though, so. So what was it, sorry, from 218,000? Sorry.
Sorry, Rachel, you're breaking up there.
Two one eight. Two one eight, nine oh six. Nine oh six, thank you. Two. Two three one, two two five. Two two five, thank you. Which is in that list, 12,390. I would like to bring up that a lot more than that was clashed in June when we went through everything. Two one eight, two three one, that is 12,000.
I thought it was three three one, that was.
No, two one eight, nine oh six, so two three one, two two five.
I got the script, I think they're, I heard that too, they're guilty. That's out of my Rachel sense, it makes it sound like 300, 400, 500.
And it's a different, and it's not like 12,390.
Okay, thank you. So are we, can you ask to make a decision then basically on those budget considerations and adjustments to do?
Yeah, I mean, they are realistic figures based on the, how the account should have been showing our expenditures. The other thing is that these budget changes have already been in the forefront of the 54 plan and the income and expenditure schedule that went out just before. But I mean, that's how I picked all these up. We don't normally have this money, but I mean, it's exceptional circumstances for modern music.
Does anyone else have any further comments before moving on?
I mean, all, all I would say is these are budget, so we don't just spend it because it's fair, you know, it has to be linked to the contract or price.
So are we, but are we, you know, the amendments to the budgets, the second change in budgets?
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to actually amend the budgets as, as tabled, where it's complete. Any more second now? Yeah, definitely, you go to the. Exactly, by Tony? I'm happy, okay. So all those in favour of adopting what Rachel's provided in pack? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go to pages five and seven?
Tell me to give that. Uh, right, so. Basically, um, so that's the snapshot of where we are now, but this is all after the mid-year review. Uh, so, um, now moving on to other things that are outstanding, um, or things for consideration, so. We have got quite a few things going on with strategic planning that have been discussed, nothing's been approved, but, um. In the main, but some things have been, um, uh, discussed, so. Uh, the state park development, um, the interiors of the containers. Uh, twelve thousand maximum budget has been provisionally set aside, approved by council, but that's again, is pending quote. And that would be council's decision, um, but that, that would be coming out of the youth reserves, um, number three O's have nine. So, um, that doesn't impact some things that are going forward. Uh, Bayless Court Activity Centre, um, that was called for, uh, replacing the damaged grass. Um, and improving the grass in the preschool, uh, play area, um, putting in artificial gla-, uh, artificial grass. Um, there's currently seventeen thousand remaining in the ground maintenance budget, so. Yes, we have to sort of pay the monthly contract and a few other bits and pieces, um. And I was speaking to Del, um, um, she let me know that there are some possible sort of hefty holes, maintenance, um. Bills coming, uh, but that seventeen thousand should be enough to, to sort of cover all those areas. Uh, Bayless Court Play Area, um, just refreshing that, at the last meeting, that budget was, um, provisionally. Increased from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and five, but the final decision, um, whether that goes ahead or not, uh, to be taken. Uh, once we know what the financial position is at, at year end. Uh, we have got seventy-five thousand for that, that was, um, arranged in, in June. Um, and there, there is, um, possible external funding available, um, if we can secure some of that. So, um, we're in a fairly good position there. It, it's just if we go above that seventy-five thousand at the moment. And we don't secure external funding for the difference, we would have to work, um, over the following year to, to repay that money back. So that we're in a strong position to support the other play areas, um, as, as they're, they're needs, sort of replacing it various times in the future. Uh, the installation and replacement of the bus shelters, that's been put on hold for the foreseeable future. But I thought I would to highlight that within reserves, council had put eighteen thousand by, um, in previous, uh, periods. And that was primarily to replace bus shelters. So you could, while we're going into the next budget run, you could consider reducing that, if you. Um, or maintaining it, I'm just highlighting that that's an area that, um, you, uh, you could consider. Um, installation of the solar panels, um, we're working off sort of really, really big ones at the moment, um. Um, uh, we're looking at around about twenty-five thousand each side for that to go ahead. Uh, we haven't got money in reserve for in the budget for that at the moment, uh, we've got five thousand in our, um, green reserve. Um, so it's helpful, we'd want to follow that through, um. We'd have, we'd have to find where that money is going to come from. Uh, replacement of the reflet, uh, Bayless Court, again, that, that's at early stages. Um, at the time that I wrote this report, we were looking at a region of sixty-four thousand, and at the last meeting, um. Council said that they'd be interested in, uh, putting in solar ta-, uh, solar panels, uh, within the tie-in of any new roof. Uh, Del today said that if it was a whole roof, then the actual, um, quote would be a lot higher. But it's not something that, that's urgent at the moment, and again, council have just asked the quotes to be thought. Um, but if we do need to go ahead with that, then I think that's, again, something that we have to plan for. Over a number of years and put some money into the, to the future. Um, then the other items of consideration, um, ignore the next one because that's a duplication of the state park. So I'm not betting with money tonight. Um, the next one is, um, the Brookway Development, so, um, it is using the building as storage and. At the last council meeting, um, it was mentioned for us to have a look at possibility of the loans. For there some getting because, um, our record loans coming to an end in, um, next year. So I have been in contact with the Ministry of Housing and Community and local government. Because we have to get permission to borrow from them before we can even approach anyone for, to borrow money. And if we did, we almost certainly would go to the Public Works Loan Board because they do the best rates for the public sector. Um, basically, uh, they have said you can apply for a loan, but you have to meet certain criteria. Um, affordability obviously being a major one, but also, um, going out for a public consultation. We have to do this when we, um, took out the length of the office. Um, so it's not something that's gonna happen straight away and, um, you know, there are positive factors to that. Um, and we would actually have to sort of work out costings against this and, you know, whether it's feasible. And get the sort of public to, uh, approve it, party council approving it before we can even apply for a loan. So that's just in a circumstance, before you do anything, you have to get a loan agreement before actually being able to apply for a loan. Um, so that, that's an interesting thing. Uh, what they did say though, because I thought, you know, if council have. Were looking at solar panels and this, that and the other, and you were going to go for a loan, um. You could do one loan first, sort of more than one item, or you could do a few items and they're going to give you loans for each of them. Um, but again, everything would have to go after public consultation. Um, the cleaning contract, um, Tony, Del just mentioned it, especially with Covid going on. I'm just highlighting it that, um, you know, additional cleaning going forward might be needed or additional costs. Um, I'm just highlighting that, that, you know, that might be a situation that, that may arise, um. Who knows how sort of Covid's going to progress and, um, what our current contractors lack to task, especially, you know, sort of headroom. Public building with multiple groups going in and out. Um, the next item, uh, for consideration, uh, vehicle replacement. Uh, we've got thirteen thousand in reserve at the moment, this is for the flatbeds. Uh, because apparently that is coming towards the end of its life, from the information that I've been told, so. It's whether we go ahead and replace it with a new bill, uh, sorry, with a, with a new vehicle, or whether, um. Council choose to lease one. Um, and then, uh, duty expense, uh, kitchen, again, this was looked at earlier and put on hold, obviously, due to expenditure. Um, so quotes were received or red permits were received in May, uh, in the region of, of three point seven and three point three. Um, for the ju-, uh, for the duty center main kitchen and the woodling seat kitchen. We have got thirteen thousand on the maintenance budget at the moment. Um, so if council did want to go ahead with that one. That might be worth considering later on towards the end of this financial year, if you've got sufficient money left. Um, so all those are just items to, you know, sort of that I'm gonna try and bear in mind. As we're going through setting the budget for next year because things are gonna be tight. Um, so looking ahead, based on where we are at the moment, the five-year forward plan. Uh, the, the basic foundations of next year's budget are already in place. Um, obviously, we'll, we'll go around with, or sort of reduce figures or amend them as much as we can as we move forward. Um, the current projection is showing, uh, forty-five point seven thousand year-end surplus at the end of this year. Um, that will roll into next year. Now, that is assuming that all budgets are spent, which generally we, we don't. We have slashed budgets already, so we might have less to do than more now. Uh, because even though we're not getting income in, the, our running costs of, of, uh, continuing. Um, and the, the forward plan that went out with this report, uh, goes by, uh, naught point five percent. Pre-set increase over the next five-year period. And the figures, uh, the tax base figures, based on those given to South Gloucestershire on the last budget. They feel reduced by five percent. Um, we might, I don't know how realistic that is at the moment, so. Moving forward from next year's budget, that's gonna be the biggie that determines how much. Sort of money we're, we're actually going to get on the reset. Excuse me. So, um, continuing on page seven, so it's now looking ahead, this is the big third one to setting the budget. Um, so as I said, the tax base, um, if that means a lot, if it's a lot lower than, uh, we're projecting, then. Obviously, that impacts our budget, and we're not going to know until early December, um, or early January possibly. I don't think any information will be coming out from South Gloucestershire currently, um, in, in view of what's going on. Hello?
They are a, they are aiming to gear, um, and did it figure hopefully by the end of November. Remember, parish and town councils.
Oh, that's, that would be good, that would give us a, a, a bit more leeway then. Um, then, um. I mean, the public works loan that finishes, uh, November next year, that's already built into the forward plan, so. That expenditure is, is already accounted for. Um, the impact of the pandemic and different options. This is the difficult thing, nobody knows how, you know, how, how this is going to, um, evolve. So we don't know how long our income is going to be sort of, uh, reduced from the sites especially, but also with the tax base. Um, employment levels who affect it, which directly affects the, um, you know, the, um, applying our pre-verb. Um, so the current income budgets within the forward plan for next year, um, from the, uh, from the sites. Are still at a hundred and thirty-six thousand, we might have to slash those, um, and, and assume that, you know, that the sites aren't fully open. Um, we're gonna have to be really careful how, how this sort of next budget is set, um. I mean, but this is just highlight, I have, I have got an option linked to this, so, um. So, uh, yeah, how. Council maybe to work within a worst-case scenario, um, and reduce, um, the income from sites by fifty percent. To take a protective stance by setting the budget for next year, and then everything else, you know, if things do improve, so, so much. Um, but such an.
We have reduced, we have reduced income budgets already, haven't we, Rachel?
But, but for this year.
Rachel, this is what you're looking at next.
Yeah. What's interesting is that, and this is on the front, on the front page, that we've got that, got that reduction. So Rachel was saying that that reduction effectively could continue potentially?
We might have to do, have a look at doing, slashing next year's income as well, yeah.
Okay.
But ju-, just to, uh, luckily, the bulk of our income is from the pre-set, um, and we do get some from investments as well. But, um, in that respect, and because we have got good reserves, compared to a lot of other town and parish councils. We are in a really, really strong position, but, you know, we, we don't need to assume that, you know, our income levels are gonna be high. Um, I'm just saying, at the moment, the unfortunate thing is that we're setting budgets in November to December, Jan. Um, we don't know which way the, the virus is gonna go. It might not be until late spring, but a, a vaccine comes in that might change everything. It might, we don't know what we're dealing with, so all I'm saying is, on those grounds, um, I would, I'd be tempted or, uh, to slash the. The budgets for the income from the sites, just similar to what we have this year. Um, and that, that will allow some movement if the tax base is, uh, reduced as well, so that we get less pressure. So basically, it's all round, if, if the councils, um, wanted to sort of play, play it safe and. You know, assume we're below income for the year, for next year.
Rachel, you're basically, you're all looking at doing less income to what we've done this year?
Not matching it, matching it.
Are you, okay, you were anticipating that we're likely doing the same next year, what we've done this year?
We don't, nobody knows, I'm, all I'm saying is, I mean.
I agree, you're not a crystal ball.
No.
Dark somewhere, you know, um.
Yeah.
What was connected, the figure?
So I'm losing you.
We're looking at, is it based on what we've done this year? Are the figures based on what you're, is it based?
I, I would, I, well, I would, I, I, I haven't created the figure yet, so, but I probably would suggest that we do. Um, for the income from the sites, I think it's similar to what we have in the budget at the moment for the current year, yes.
That was a yes then, after all of that?
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not hearing very well.
I, I think it's based, the income figures on the figures that we have done this year?
Yes. But I probably, it was, yeah, but it, it's council's decision, that's why I'm throwing this out here, I'm just saying, this is. What I would suggest, but at, at the end of the day, it's council's decision, where, you know, setting budgets. I'm just highlighting that it might be better to slash next year's income again.
Yeah. So Rachel, let me make the questions a little bit different. Are you going to reduce the income from what we've done in this year to next year?
On that?
Or are you gonna keep it as?
It would be the same next, if I was writing a budget that I was approving. I would put in the same budget levels as this year for next year.
For income?
For income from the activity centers.
The income, now there's more activities.
Yeah, now. Yeah, yeah, now, yeah, just for the activity centers.
You're gonna make me sick, you're gonna.
Sorry?
You're not gonna reduce it any further?
Well, it's your decision, if you want me to, I will.
She's not gonna recommend it.
It's not my issue, I I like it.
No?
Um.
Okay.
But 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 what, but I was thinking about this because, I mean, it's difficult for all all councils, so what we have got, that a lot of other town and parish councils haven't got, and it's there for a reason, is a contingent reserve. We've got two hundred and fifty thousand in there. Now, best practice is that that money is held, and it's supposed to be twenty-five percent of your turnover, um we uh to, in times of crisis, to stop a town or parish council, you know, sort of, not that we can go bankrupt, but to head that way. Now, this pandemic, I would say, falls within the category that we can use that contingent reserve, or use some of it, and then you gradually build it up in reserves in when, you know, sort of money is more readily available. So that's one way out, so instead of just cutting everything massively, council could choose when it comes to budget time, and that's all I'm doing, I'm just trying to get some direction, um of using some of the two hundred and fifty thousand contingent reserve to push in the blow of the loss of income caused directly from the pandemic. It's, that's what it's there for.
In my own opinion, I, we've kind of touched on this a little bit in um committee meetings and finance, uh for council meetings up to this point, so we've been unsure, as 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 most people, with the impact of COVID on us financially. And like I said, we've got that safety ground a bit there, but I think what we're kind of battling with in various committees is the expenditure we're kind of trying to commit ourselves to in what we're going for quotes for, what we're looking at tonight. As you rightly backed to us, I wouldn't even say, I don't think you would believe it, but I think some of these paragraphs you've spoken over this evening in terms of decisions we've made to go away and look at things that cost more than what we've got available to spend, because I'm quite worrying that the RSO didn't say to us, you've got the same bank here, two different sort of industry, with the backdrop of we've just gone through a note of activity that is kind of optional, it's not going to cause critical issue or problem if it was not progressed.
No, no, if you if you send, if you read on in my report, you put that contingent reserve is directly linked to expenditures or income losses because of COVID, it is not the wish list capital project.
No, no, so what I would rather do, personally, is I would rather see those capital projects be reduced or postponed to stop even the contingency fund being used to um adjust for loss of income and other loss against COVID et cetera. Personally.
Just makes you wonder.
Go on, Terry.
I was just gonna say, it just makes you wonder what what's that for, then you could you could never use it, really. I just wonder, I mean, this is like an out-of-odd experience, this particular pandemic, isn't it? So it's kind of not, hopefully, please, God never happens again, but it's just really, really out-of-the-ordinary situation, isn't it? So.
I think I agree, um what you've said, um in my view, my personal view, um we've always been really financially buoyant and really financially looked after, so we have been in a situation where you can make those trade-ups between things. I mean, I see the reserve as a situation where you can't make a trade-up anymore, and whereas I think we've got things, activity and contracts that we look at to kind of trade, so I think we've got trade space, um which we're really lucky for, because the financial management of the council for many years has been really good. Um and I just think that the reserve elements, yes, ordinarily, but other councils probably haven't been well looked after, might be digging into reserves et cetera, but I think for us, we've got trade space in our our capital projects, in some of the expansion of the contracts, but there are realisation, there is realisation of saving probably elsewhere, I think personally, after listening to how we could reduce that to a standard.
On on your report, Rachel, I wanna go through a few things, hopefully that we could save some money, but what we've actually only lost in real terms, someone agrees about seven and a half eighty pounds from the pandemic, does not is a big black picture is what it necessarily is going to be. However, however, I remember, however, I remember that much where it bends some of the way we shouldn't necessarily do that. What I had to come into, a couple of questions from the report. First of all, you said that before we can get a government loan, we need to have a loan agreement. Where did you get that from?
It it's from the people that I got that response from, so it is from the Ministry of Housing and Communities local government. So it's that that that, so that that is the legal procedure, so for town and parish councils, before they they can't just go out and get a loan, you have to get permission to go and get a loan.
Yeah, okay.
That has to meet certain criteria, so that's why I went and asked.
Okay, we need to start somewhere, so okay, then then I think we need possibly look at the um of the roof of buying, but okay, let me move on. Um you mentioned about a variable investment, I'll go back to the number, um of uh thirteen overhand.
No, wait, no, I, we've got my kids to pay from the past time.
Yeah, okay, yeah, if I'm.
Um but.
Please let me finish, Rachel.
All right.
Right. Um have you thought, and I know you've got them here, um depending on whether you're British outsize or on lease, I don't know if you have thought about PCP, which is a facility where you have a brand new vehicle, of which it's effectively a lease, of which you either have for a year, two years, three years, and you effectively only pay what the depreciation of that vehicle over that period. It's a new way of effectively financing new cars or new vehicles, um and it's quite uh um a a good way of financing things. Um all all you do pay um is a is the depreciation. However, if you, for example, manage that vehicle, and when it goes back, it gets inspected, and we will be very struck. For example, if you care if you will, if it's an hour will, then there's a charge. Um if you if you broke the contract, then there's a charge. So you have to really look after the vehicle, you need, you also have to service it with regular intervals, but it is a way of not having to look at spending fifteen grand.
No, I I don't actually get involved with, I'm just highlighting what um if the um um.
And why is that?
It has been highlighted to me that there's a possible expense there, so no, that that's that's very valid, all I'm saying is that if that doesn't come up, there is thirteen thousand in reserve, you know, but it it's a question at the end of the day.
If we don't have PCP, then we could possibly utilize that budget somehow.
Yeah.
Or reduce it.
Yeah.
If that, well, I haven't gone for it, but save money. Um I don't wanna touch too much at this moment, I'm on a cleaning contract, but I I have gone around to other sites, and this possibly could be for a a meeting in full council, and the standard of cleaning, to be quite frank, is a peak, a whole bit. Um uh and certain questions I've asked are 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 going by the way between. I've been looking at a cleaning contract now for probably twenty years. One question I would like to ask is, um which I asked when this contract was changed, who buys the cleaning products? And I can see from our, from our, uh, we're wanting to think that, um we're paying just um for the consumption. Now, my question, who buys the cleaning products?
Before I was out, um I jumped on this quite substantially, and they pay for their own products for cleaning of the site, the additional cleaning products and what we need to bring in for our hire, so like sort of hand jobs and things like that. I couldn't tell you, I haven't been that long enough to go into that in detail, but within the contracts, their their cleaning materials within that contract, they should be covered on.
So are we paying for the cleaning products off of the contract, or are they?
No, it should, well, how the contract used to be, the, and all clean contracts, I would have expected, um should include their cleaning materials. Now, that's how it was before I was out, I couldn't answer that now because I didn't have that information, but I would have thought that they they did pay for their own cleaning materials, so we'd have to pass that on to.
It's a minute each other.
Yeah.
The next question is, where do we buy our consumables from?
I I can't, I don't know. I've, it's, Tony, it's purely because I've been that long enough to to go into both people, I don't know, it would know.
You mean like that you say about the Manells one on the um?
The the consumables are your toilet papers that um bin liners and.
Yeah, that's true, we get it through Manells, through the cleaning company.
Why don't we buy it through the cleaning company, when we should be buying it through a wholesaler?
Yeah.
You'd save money. I couldn't, no, I don't either. Exactly. I mean, in the case of this scenario, that we're buying the tool of cleaning company for the traffic.
Can can I just say, pre- previously in the past, what we did do, we um went out and checked our prices um from, um yeah, sort of from buying and from sort of others buyers, compared it with the price that the cleaning company put to buy it at, that was in the in the past, are we going for the cheaper structure?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, then you're going to the wrong suppliers. These cleaning contractors are buying them from a wholesaler, and then they're using them, and then they're putting out a markup on for selling them back to you. You need to go directly to, if you buy wholesale, there's cleaning products, they're all wholesale, bits of pie, we could, I don't mind getting prices from it for for you, you know?
It's definitely.
Anything that pays money, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm proposing with that. It's definitely worth looking into.
And there's a, did I say, or sort of perhaps at least we've got a link, um uh, who is actually stock checking in stock rates on the cleaning product? Oh, you're sorry, the continually? I don't think anybody is. Secondly, there is.
We 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 do, we do an annual one, uh the sites, I I mean, I can't answer, I can't answer this question directly because that's outside of finance, but gen- generally, we use, we did use to have um a continual stock check being made, sort of.
Yeah, well.
And and I finally like one for order at the end of the year, but yeah, continually at the end of each week.
So I've got all the cleaning covers I looked in, they're not all washed out.
I think that's outside of my area.
They're they're actually over, but it's something that needs to be addressed.
Don't find that thing, I think, I don't mind. So in terms of like going this this step, I think we need to put on the agenda for the full council, cleaning company, um and our group as too.
Yes, I think that's right, we've obviously looked up by ways to try and save money where we can, provided we don't turn down the standards, same thing.
Well, yeah, currently the standard of the number there for the board. Because we need income for slightly more commercial, but you can say all the contracts you've got, I'll give you a.
I personally don't think that, no. So is that why? And and there's something else which I thickly ought to also think about, is that every single tenant that comes in is a bonus, and it's equally going to be the presence of a council, and that has to be a stock fee, if not. That could be, those are the ones we use.
Yeah.
That would need change to financial, like financial order, standing orders as well.
For what simple tenants, though?
Well, yeah, because obviously.
Certain classes of, and what's happening.
Well, okay, so, so we say, are we saying, basically, commercial would be looking at uh financial regs and standing orders, and just doing a few different.
Can you turn some tables?
Yeah.
So when full council, when council is in danger, you're gonna.
I don't know, I don't think it's, no, I don't think it's really a stick to get that done in the next couple of weeks.
Or do you want a, say, by March of December, and then it goes to full council in January? So you've got some time to take to discuss concerns, I I should just move on to, you you need to do it now.
The silly fact is, obviously, on March, it'd be really, the quality would be a pleasure of us being, and then we had two pieces of art which are grassy, and I could screw it, screw it into the floor, I mean, for seven hundred fifty, man?
I actually found, I found that, um, that purchase order from September two thousand and nineteen, and it was one purchase order, five nine five, plus the eighteen.
Five for six, pretty quick.
Each?
No, there's only one.
A piece of art, two fish grass, it was about ten by six, and it's been screwed into the floor of two inches now, uh two inches, because it's due.
So is that, was that purchased within the, was that the, within the financial?
Five nine five, possibly, I think, yeah.
That's right.
So we get, we get back back.
Is that purchased within the, we met of seven fifty or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe two, three, two, no, two, two, two pieces of money, so it's actually very getting under it.
I could only find one purchase order for five nine five, I did.
Yeah, you're right.
I checked on that one.
So do you want, do you want to pass, do you want to pass it to the, to the actual council?
I think we'd have to, I think, not really this time.
Well, any decision on financial regs and standing orders would have to go to full council, I can't go without that.
Um actually, the time to create all the information together for full council, that's part of it. Tony wants, I think, full council in November, probably show council, so.
So you want a full review of everything in the next two weeks?
Well, I think we've got refracted.
That's not, yeah, that's.
I think probably a whole new report.
Let's start off with, um, uh ambient landscaping and the building contract. So could we, could we have that, just those two then, for full council, with the additional note that we want to do in that preview of this uh contract with a procedural uh look as well?
With procedural.
And we can have the report for that for five, in in December, and then it can go to full council meeting in January for ratification, if it needs any management support.
And then we get all our jobs in the road for next financial year.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the rest, yeah, and I think it's still a nonsense, you're really on that. You think you're saving money, you're not, you're just giving a loan check up, and then change it up.
That's my personal opinion, I think we should work to tend to every single year. We should exit board next contract.
Then you could go out every year, you're danger of people not going to give you the best price, because they're, they are adding more.
They're adding every year.
I disagree, my plan today is, I know, there's people have their screen, you know?
And they're the right people, is the question.
Well, you know, if you want to do that, that's right. Well, you know, if you want to get that right, we're not going to let them have it.
Okay.
Do we?
Okay.
Hang on, so the review of current contracts is for four counts of November, and then what, and then December, finance?
So the review of those, the, the, the cleaning contract?
Yeah.
And the, uh, landscape maintenance contract, what highway?
Well, the highway verge.
All of that covers in one? Because you've got the roundabouts and all that.
Well, no, the round, there's no contract for roundabouts because that's finished now.
Okay, so, but all, but all of that, the new or state's contract is one bucket, isn't it? And then you've got the cleaning, so the review, part A, full council, that's one. Have a bit of a report on that, and then finance, have more of a full financial review against full contracts.
The new one, but the preliminary. One, there's one other one, this is, uh, he's holding state, you know?
Like that?
See, well, I can, I'll keep you on note. For, um, he's holding.
Uh, oh, that's the core security, yeah, they have their key holders for us safe, so if, if the alarm goes off in the middle of the night, they come out to that.
Okay, I can leave you over that.
So, uh, can we, can we, I've got a key to that for the night. Okay, and, 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 so is it worth to say just for now, the two biggest concerns progress next month? And there's a more, a, a broader report for December? And then there's a further elaboration that we'll talk about.
If, if you feel that they might pay for three, or three.
Well, it's like, two weeks or three weeks. Four weeks today, but then staff has to go out the week before, so that's three weeks today.
Yeah, um, I don't know, I mean, what is it, what is it, any other council thing? I don't want to hear anyone that says that it needs to be done in this timeframe. Um, anybody else got any comment? I think again, right, Russia makes it hard for the officers to do it. I don't think that's a good thing. Really, it's been dragging on, I believe, for months and not years, uh, so one more month, not even a day, that much. And, and, and that's more difficult. Okay, well, I, I don't think we're supposed to let this deal chat.
No, yeah, yeah.
I'm not going to say anything else, I think the timeframe, I've said is adequate to give the time you need to review it. Um, unless anybody else wants to chip in, say anything, I think we should just move on from that. And then. I think that's okay, so. Is there any final comments, special for the item we were discussing?
No, I mean, this, the, the, the three chairs for, for the budget, I mean, I'm led by council, um, so generally, I, uh, what we've done in the past are, are send, um, which I've issued to the Chair of Finance and the Chair of Council, to comment ahead of them, of, of, you know, sort of meeting, you think? Um, because, I mean, especially if, you know, with all these comments and everything going on, uh, you know, so our, our moves more direction. So if I'm in contact, um, with Ben Tony, um, and take production from the two of you initially, first project path?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come up with that. Yeah, on the, on the hiring, you've actually had hire it in, that means it's given.
We've had some hires then, but a, a lot of candidates.
You know, the preschool, adult schools, forget football, that all good.
Yeah, um, if you have a look at the.
It is important, yeah.
Um, blood donation being in actually serious, so I'm not being here. We, we have got some left then, and the scouts, I think, were starting back, uh, more recently, um, bowls couldn't come back in, but I think the brickheads sort of came back in. So we have had times in, it's not that we haven't had any income. And on page one of the, the report, you can see on there, the, um, the actual income from each of the sites. And that we have got, I mean, they're as poor in particular, it is pretty good. Um, we might have to issue some refunds for, uh, places that, you know, uh, of the hires that have canceled. I mean, hard to control ahead, and especially when we've got the, you know, sort of maximum number of six people, and it's that impact for hiring and things like that, so it, it, it's an ongoing changing situation. We are getting income in, we're not turning away hires, but, um, you know, some just cannot go ahead.
Yeah, there's a few, Mark, but there's lots of.
Yeah, none, none are being turned away before, and some have asked not to, um, sort of go ahead because uh, because the areas we've, uh, uh, we, we've not told people that they can't cancel.
One question which might be just off the wall. Um, we've got the jewellery centre, we've not been as poor, we've got, um, Goodway. Um, we've got another, uh, which is on lockdown. Can you tell me what?
We've got what, sorry?
Got her, you saw.
I don't know.
You've got her, it's.
I don't know, I do find out, I, I can't tell you. I, I'm guessing it's because, I, I, I don't know. I'm guessing because of social distancing and then I, I don't know.
Brian does go out there, and actually, he was saying a couple of weeks ago that hopefully he's going to be starting to do some more things in the container over there, yeah, opening it up. So hundreds of those, um, from that centre.
I sure. I, I don't know, but these, these are little, all this is, I can't understand why that's not. We've spent money on putting the computer in there, extra, uh, um, C three three, um, doing an extra container there, and yet sure. Uh, I don't know.
I don't see any impact.
No, we don't receive any income, we don't. The brand opened the container, he was over there, um, yes. He was over there, pulled in there Monday evening and Tuesday this week. Because actually, we thought some people sort of tend to get. Friday nights, and they're like, oh, okay.
So do they more now than that would. I, I don't know, I mean, it's not saying we're improving, so they're improving that we have that. And then it's got a fully operational habit, to have it, and it's not really.
Okay, Rachel, is there any, anything further to be said on eight point one?
No.
Anything further to seven eight point?
No, 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 I mean, what, what I can, it's, it's, no, it's, that is, it, it's, it's just testing sort of the, the template before we do go into testing budgets, just, just to sort of highlight different areas. Ju- just the consideration, um, ahead of time.
No, thanks, Miss Gray, until we can do anything back to speak. And. Eight point two is our petty act statements.
Yeah. Uh, uh, Terry. Terry did these, uh, with my, in my department, so, but it looks very standard, so hopefully Sharon and I just do this now, don't we?
I'm just going to write them on there, it's the cheap products, uh, on the, it'll be, uh, it'll be right.
What, in, in the main, in the boxes, have to cash it out?
No, that's what we're doing, we're doing, uh, things here, so, yeah, I've got the, 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 please, please. Tell me what that was for.
It was, really, uh, so, uh, that, um, the base for cleaning materials was probably things like, um, washing up liquid, and that's what they, I think.
Stuff for outside of the cleaning company.
Yeah, nothing to do, actually, they actually for us, our, our own, yeah.
Cleaning product.
Because we, we do, I mean, we do have to sort of clean between hires, you think? Um, because when one finishes, and, and that, that, I live in front of, that's why there's, like, the sanitizing sprays and the, um, hand sanitizers and sprays, which were bought in September.
Do you understand that some of ladies love that sort of the pivot, or, 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 or?
Yeah, there is, they support cleaning materials nine pounds forty five.
I mean, we, we, we do have, um, cleaning sort of costs for each of our sites, we're bound to, I mean, like Sharon said, um, washing up liquids, and, you know, because you do, we do have hires in using taps and things like that, um, and we do have to sort of clean after certain hires have been in and sort of deepen the floors, and we've got in liners and, um, things like that. So, so there are small, no, there are cleaning costs. But the main ones should fall to the cleaning company.
So if you propose or have a snatch statement, is that, is, would anyone like to propose?
Yeah.
Might want to propose that, would anyone like to second them? Anybody like to second, second cash statement? It's free to you to second, second cash statement. I will second, second cash statement. And. All those in favour? We've got Fab, we've got John, we've got Nina, we've got Mike, we've got Tony, we've got Terry. Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, really.
I would be a second, my other side, and then if you can sign, well, I'd be.
That's absolute, thank. Thank you. Okay, so item eight point three is the C C L A, um, investment update. I'll let you, don't read on this, thank you.
Uh, this is, uh, links to the C C L A local authority, uh, property fund investments that we have. Uh, council's got sixty thousand invested, um, it is included in our investment policy, and, um, it. Um, it, 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 initially, um, it was just to let you know that, uh, uh, dealings had been suspended because it is a property fund, so dealing was suspended between March. But, uh, at the end of September, um, it, uh, first dealings restarted, um, a lot of the property funds apparently, um, were placed, uh, for the period, um, uh, just, just to protect sort of the invested temporarily, um, uh, because they thought the property fund could be sort of quite volatile, but, um, it's just to let help them know that that did happen, that dealing has restarted, and it started on the thirty of, of, um, September. Um, this, um, deals once a month, it's longer each month. Uh, but also later this, um, the, um, the S B A looked at, um, putting, uh, notice periods in for people that wanted to sell within property fund. Uh, and they were looking, um, up to sort of a hundred and eighty day notice, um, for, uh, notice provision sales. This is new. Um, C C L A have introduced a ninety day notice period for any redemption from that sort of property fund. So really, it's just to let sort of council know ahead that, um, you know, we, we can't just decide a couple of weeks before the end of March, right, we're going to get rid of this. Um, we are going to have to do it months ahead, um, before sort of dealing actually goes through, so we won't necessarily, um, we, we won't have an active date of time, but, um, that is one of the jewels of, uh, being in that property fund also. Uh, but what it does, it, it's, it's more realistic so that, um, if a large number of investors did want to get rid of their investment, it gives the firm time to sell property, because, you know, obviously, property, you can't sell overnight, so, um, they, they brought in, um, uh, ninety days of notice period, so, um, sorry, so we are going to have to, it's the three month notice, uh, that we're going to have to do ahead. If, if, if the time comes that public decides they don't want this investment anymore. Um, at the same time, um, within our investment policy, um, we invested in, uh, November two thousand and eighteen, and council saw this as a long term investment, knowing that, um, there'd be a loss initially, um, and that's why, um, the limit of six, of a sixty thousand pound investment, uh, was capped, and we weren't going to go above that. Um, in return to get, um, a, 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 a very good, well, a very good yield historically, um, so for the last year, we've had, um, an average of three point nine five percent, um, sort of first of July of last year, going, sorry, since October last year, June of July of this year. Um, so at the moment, the investment still, um, coincides with our investment policy, so, um, it, obviously, it's actually council, and there will be sort of these coming in in November, but at the moment, everything coincides with our investment policy, so I wouldn't see a change, it would be the wrong time to get rid of such a, uh, such an investment at this particular time. So really, this, this is just sort of notification of the new situation regarding this investment.
So there's no action on that at the moment, too?
No, it, 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 it's just to receive it, um, you know, sort of, um, I mean, I'm recommending sort of no change, and I'd probably be, um, suggesting that, uh, that, uh, the November investment will be in, um, you know, uh, because we, we tend to have a look at the investment, but I did last, um, not last year, the year before, we, we've done, um, if you remember, when the cap did, that fifty thousand of the investment, um, so, um, it, it, you know, sort of the market is a bit surprised, but having said that, the, um, I have, um, attached a lot of market research and market reports of people who are in fact with. Um, on the second page, it does show the graph of, um, uh, the stability of, of the commercial property market at the moment, so. I, I, you know, sort of, um, I, I'm not recommending sort of any change at the current time, and I probably won't next month, but, but, you know, it's a council decision at the end of the day, in which case you need to know that it's mandatory notice period now.
Any questions, maybe, or have you just received that? And can you imagine your ceiling? Okay, we will need one to, thank you, Rachel. Will we want to item eight point four, consistent, funding hearing, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, funding request?
Um, they've sent out, um, funding requests in for next year, I mean, probably fifteen supplies more imported now than ever for our local community, um, and just for those counties that don't know, um, they, it's a Wednesday, isn't it, they come, Sharon?
Yeah, normally.
They, I'm still on catch up for a lot of stuff at the moment, um, they come on a Wednesday, um, they're in sort of huge demand, and they will only see private estate residents when they come on Wednesday to our site, uh, utilizing our funding. Um, everybody has to give their face code, and anybody out by the. Um, everybody has to give their face code and anybody outside of Bradley Stoke, they will be direct, uh, to see them, um, on another day at another site. So, um, their funding goes completely on local residents. And it is, I mean, historically, I, I can't imagine, um, that anything's changed. I, I don't know if they're, are they still running at the moment, Sharon?
No, they haven't run at all through lockdown. Um, but they have a dedicated line, local contact line, which Bradley Stoke residents can use, which isn't the, the generic main citizens advice. It's a local one that's open Monday to Friday, I think it is. Um, and that's publicized on our website and on our notice boards. They could act, they did say that they could actually have looked at coming back here. But because they couldn't open all of their remote sites at the same time, because there was a problem with the Yate one, I think it was. Um, they didn't want to open here because they thought they'd be swamped with people trying to come here who weren't Bradley Stoke people. So that's why they haven't actually done face to face meetings. But yeah, there is the, the, a local contact number. So they are still providing a, a service to Bradley Stoke residents.
So, uh, sorry.
Two hundred and twenty.
Fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty. The current funding, uh, is fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty two. So this is equivalent to a one point nine eight for two thousand and eighty. The forward plan had a fleet spending, just built into it. So it's well within the budget for it, if I wanted to, um, to consider it.
Sorry, what was the percentage increase, did you say?
Uh, I think they said one point nine eight and I, um, I, it, it's around about two percent, a two thousand and eighty. Two percent. It may be for two hundred and fifty eight pounds.
So any people propose spending the fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty on citizens advice? Propose by Fab? Or seconded by Mike? Is it three hundred and twenty year? I will give him fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred.
So they didn't charge a funny thing?
No, sorry, let me just read this again. Didn't they used to pay three hundred pound a year?
Not, no, not, not in years. No, I, I mean, I could go back, we, but. You said sponsored by, um, the chief funding, um, they called it in the same sector, um.
Sorry, it's been happening. It's Almansbury that we pay three hundred pounds.
You have me worried, Sharon.
Yeah, it, it's just been happening.
I, I, I can remember sort of going, um. I, I can remember going back, but, um, uh, when council were considering sort of the six hundred device, it was because there was a lot of demand. But were people coming into, um, our sites asking, you know, if there was any good incentive for Bradley Stoke? It has run for a number of years. Um, they, uh, 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 attached, I, I don't know if you've had a look at it. They, they do a full report that is specific for, um, the usage, uh, in Bradley Stoke and.
Yeah, we can ask fifty two meetings a year. And then I'll charge the fifteen round.
They, they do, I mean, they do add the work help, uh, you know, sort of in, in addition. I mean, they attend the site, but they then carry on with work outside of those meetings as well.
Just raising a different penny? Could I just perhaps suggest that the whole far on the fifteen grand at this moment in time? But there, there will be one here. Citizen Life feels fantastic, but and they're absolutely mighty for a strain. Uh, during this COVID period, they're being in demand a lot more. But I think it would be peaceful, just to check what other local authorities, uh, grant, i.e. and how could have had the, the pain. But I think we're possibly paying quite a bit more.
Have you any figures back up there?
Yeah, Almansbury is a bit of a year.
But that's. Fraction of our size.
And, and Almansbury, Almansbury will be a donation to citizens advice. By this money that we pay, we get a dedicated service once a week here for only the Bradley Stoke residents. As opposed to having to, people go.
Why don't you just ask two other places where they do go, which is actually important. And try and answer their chat. Well, hang on a minute. We've got a proposal from Fab and we've got seconded by Mike. So I'm going to take away on that first, if I was, um, we will go through to just what you write. So do you have in favour paying the fifteen, what do you vote in favour of paying?
Yes, it is, yeah, because you've got the proposal and I'll second that, yeah.
So all those in favour for continuing with citizens advice as documented in front of you? Raise your hands. So we've got Fab, Mike and Nina. All those against? Tony? Abstentions? John? Terry is abstaining. So proposal carried. Okay, so item eight point five.
But Tony, that interests, I will just, where did you say that they go?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I will just ask the question. That interests.
Item eight point five is the dedicated police officer, police officer, company of press call twenty one, twenty two. And put that table.
So they're looking for sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty six pounds, um, uh, and this fund's eleven hours per week for the twenty two hour per week contract for a dedicated police officer within Bradley Stoke. Um, this has been going, uh, this funding has been going on since the mid of two thousand and nine. Um, and although originally that, uh, twenty five hours per week, it was reduced from two thousand and eleven. And you've got the four fiscal in front of you. Um, so this is based for two point one two percent increase or three hundred and fifty five pounds. Uh, the forward plan again had projected a three percent increase. So again, with, uh, with that, with within, um, within the predicted budget, if council did want to free that.
Any comments, I'd be honest? I'd rather say that the, the nervous climate attack cost you, um, so she's been tabled. Any comments on, on this thing?
No. No, thank you.
Is that, I thought, um, is that second part? So I don't suppose, I don't know, it's, 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 um, to gratify this, um, this officer currently. As I said, we, we have the nervous climate attack cost.
So you want to have it at sixteen thousand and five hundred?
Yeah, I think that we should move in this.
Yes, I'll say for that.
All those in favour? Do you know, it's not on here, point three, three? So eight point six is continuation business thing. I hope so. Hit me those.
Hit me those, banking machine. Um, our, our currently, it was essentially, at the time, it's, uh, really, really, uh, um, good, thirty seven pounds, uh, an eight hundred supporter. Um, I, um, spoke to them a few weeks ago and, um, they're offering a thirty day, uh, notice of throwing contract, seven pounds seventy five plus back the quarter, based on the same terms as we currently got, which, uh, means that, uh, downloads, um, that you have to go into the banking machine that normally costs about, uh, two hundred pounds a year, we get for free. And it's just that we paid for our income posted charges in addition. So, um, I did speak to Sharon, um, uh, especially for the current situation. Um, you're using the banking machine more where you're posting things out, aren't you?
Well, well, the council paid and everything go out, yes.
Yeah.
Do you have any on that, Harry? Have I asked how many, uh, do you have accounts on that, because usually you're on the banking machine? Was how many actual ever came back on that initiative?
I'd have to get it out of the banking machine, I didn't know. Um, it also varies on the side, uh, the side from the, uh, cost of them. But we generally, um, fill up, uh, uh, about four to six hundred pounds um, a year for sort of postage. And also at the banking machine, you, you do get a reduced postage rather than, um, than stamps and what have you. No?
Because how many individuals will be round them up?
I've no idea.
Well, if it's two packs of council papers, potentially it would be certain.
Thirty?
Yes. And then in the month when they're streaming, it would be, what do you buy?
I was, what, this is going to probably fall down ninety six, it's not that.
But, but that's, yeah, we, I don't know if you know about franking, but you, you get a reduced rate thanks to postal discharge, yeah, water.
Well, we do also pay for hire, don't we, at times?
Yeah, but I mean, that, not so much now, since, um, Covid really, most of that stuff now is done, um.
I'll propose that we continue with this contract.
I will second that. Um, all those in favour? Against? One against. Thanks, Terry.
I didn't know you had a deal with fun, Terry.
It's a place, I've got that, anyway, it's sensitive.
Well, Karl, you're going the other way, get ready.
Demonstration, please. Right, item eight point seven, time table for the twenty one, twenty two, but it's seven process, which is paid for, which is, I don't think any significant difference to normal.
No, yeah, difference to last year is it's got the different dates of this year now.
So I'm very happy to propose, I just go on this timetable. So I've sounded seated right now. Anybody second that?
Yes, I'll say a little.
Second if I might. All those in favour? Time table. Just the timetable.
Terry?
Terry? Any comments?
Thank you.
I doubt. So item eight point eight is the lease updates following pandemic, which is, uh, prescription.
Um.
Give us a bit.
When I.
Captain's nature, well.
Yeah, you're here. Um, yeah, when I came back, um, the, uh, the booking staff, uh, were saying that the, the bowls, the cricket, um, and the scouts had sort of, uh, mentioned that they weren't sure how the charges would apply this year with their leases, where they get, they're heavily subject to balance, obviously, uh, for dedicated usage generally. Um, bearing in mind that a lot of people always use it, either because the sites are closed or because their members, um, uh, couldn't attend. So, um, we did actually sort of have a staff meeting, um, and this, this report gives, gives a, a full summary of the current situation. But, um, it did highlight that we might need to put something into each of the leases for sort of situations like this for the future. So, um, after sort of focusing them out, bearing in mind that our, you know, sort of, e- even though they might not necessarily be able to attend, um, our wedding costs continue. Um, and it's a dedicated, um, area generally, so we can't even offer it to other hiree at least times in case they want to attend, because that's built into the lease. So, um, it, it's whether sort of council want to consider, uh, introduce them a minimum charge of twenty five percent of the annual lease. Um, and then any, if any of the hires do actually attend for more than twenty five percent of the time, then, uh, we would monitor that and actually, uh, calculate the, um, the, the lease proportionate to usage for that period. It is just an idea that we came up with, um, um, you know, sort of our highlights of possible wording that can go into, into the lease rate, uh, for each, each group. I would say the radio, um, separate way kept going all the way through. They weren't necessarily on site, but their equipment was there and kept running because they could, uh, come in remotely and program it remotely at times, although if they did need to account, uh, they've got their own entrance and it's completely standalone. Um, and their lease is, um, eight hundred and fifty pounds at the moment. So they have paid it and I would say that, um, theirs continues, uh, no matter what. Um, sort of even gyms, you know, sort of periods of fight shows, because they fall out of sight of the normal, um, working for, uh, the others or police holders. Uh, but the, um, the scouts that, uh, weren't able to use it all the time, but, um, I think they just started using it and they were. Okay, sorry. I, I gather they're hoping to return back after half term. That's sort of the plan, but obviously, uh, nothing's gone through bookings yet, so it's all up in the air. Yeah, yeah, so, so they, they, they might well come back. Um, the cricket club, um, you, they fought quite a lot throughout, um, uh, throughout the year. But, uh, from what I can gather, the bowls kept getting, because probably due to the age group, um, you know, a, a lot of them were just about being in sort of full lockdown or shelter. So, um, the, the groups have asked us, you know, sort of, um, what can happen sort of during these periods. Um, so, you know, the, after we sort of discussed the matter, this is what we came up with as, as a costal alternative for, for council to consider. Up there. So it's whether you want, so the twenty five percent would be a standing charge, whether the sites were open or not, whether you attend or not. Uh, this is for everyone other than the radio. The radio would keep paying that full. So the, the scouts, radio and bowls, they just pay, uh, one quarters or the first sort of, uh, payment from the lease. They pay quarterly. Um, and then if their usage is more than twenty five percent, then we would actually charge them proportionate for the actual usage based on the agreed lease.
Yeah, it's fair enough. So we've got leases in the main.
Yeah.
That had, uh, have had to be payable in terms of site availability, because people got leases against their rooms and facilities. They haven't been able to use them and we haven't necessarily been paid for the non-usage rooms, even though we've had to help the home community because they're on a lease.
Yeah, but, but we also had a period where the, uh, sites were actually closed. So nobody could, could use them during those periods as well.
In fact, that's currently built into the existing contracts with the lease, that if they can't use these facilities, they don't pay.
No, no, there's nothing in there because we've never had this before.
In this position.
I think it's brand new, that, that's why this is highlighted, so this is one option. Because they've asked a question, you know, rather than just paying it, they want to know, you know, what the situation actually is.
Well, we sit on it because we've got a contract with you. Just because they have their use it, not really our own. Just because they have their use it, not really our own.
Even if we close the, well, the sites on, I think the difference here is that we had to close the site on a government directive, we've never had that before, there's no wording anywhere on the lease link to that. It's something that is brand new. So, you know, I mean, it's fine, whichever way it goes, but it might be right to put some form of wording for such a situation in the lease.
Just take one for example, the radio, all right, they can apply for a grant. I was going to say, Corseshire.
No, the wage hasn't been reduced.
There's been discretionary grants available for all these organisations from Corseshire.
Oh, fine. So, I mean, this has just come up because they're.
Well, that's probably our issue, I should.
I think, I think it's really difficult, isn't it? Because it's, you know, it's way, way outside anyone's control that these sites have to be closed down. So it's really difficult, because you can see both sides can't, you can see from their point of view that if they can't use it, then should they pay? But then equally, you could say that about insurance, couldn't you? Yeah, so it's just very difficult. But the one thing that is a given is that, you know, the reason that they can't use the site is because of the government directive.
That's, that's the difference here, yeah.
Yeah, exactly right, yeah, yeah.
The military, around the times we explained, they never had the opportunity to apply for discretionary grants from Corseshire.
And have they done that, do you know, Rachel?
I have no idea.
No, no.
Well, let's try and ask the various organisations whether they have applied discretionary grants. So what have they achieved, that's the point, Mike. You know, if they haven't applied, that's their fault.
Have they filled that?
Look, in my vision.
No, I think that's all closed now.
It is closed now, yeah, but it was advertised quite rightly. On social media, through our site, through their site.
See, it's an organisation, it's part of business.
Yeah, yeah. See, in my mindset, in society, I'm trying to. Discretionary grants for the people that were necessarily in business, they could apply for discretionary grants, whatever they would like. So in my mind, what I'm trying to balance, certainly aside from the grants and whatever people can only get from organisations to help them over the period. Now, if I was running a local shop and I had to pay rent for somebody to own my shop in front of this and sat out of the space, I've still got to pay rent on the building, I want access to the building. So in my, I'm trying to balance in my mind whether I even would like to have they pay a twenty five percent discretionary rate, or whether it's as clear cut, it's you're renting the space, you want the space, you pay for the privilege of reserve that space.
I think the other thing to bear in mind is that if we actually come down to Everleigh and these organisations fail, this probably is still going to be a worse place without any amount of time.
I think considering some of them get funding from us as well. In general, in terms of grants, we're paying, we're investing money in them and they reinvest money in the council, re-hires and getting some of them. So there is a bit of a circle to some of that. I'm just, I'm just a bit nervous about saying this occurs in the future. It essentially limits our own income potential to twenty five percent in terms of lease.
And also, where does it end then, you know?
Absolutely.
So whether the weather's dreadful or something and they've not been able to use it, you know, delivering all that.
That, that's different, that's covered within the lease, because, yeah, due to weather, there's no difference unless we choose to close it. Sort of outside on the hard course, for example. If we choose to close it, then we tend to offer an alternative. And the main thing about this, it's not to offer a refund, it's to have something in the lease for this event. Now, if it's a case that no matter what happens, you know, the lease remains payable, let's put that in the lease.
Isn't, isn't it, isn't the lease built in that way?
Not for government closures, because we've never had it before. You know, the site is not closed by us, it's closed by the government.
But I'm very sure the fact that it's not, that there's no reference to it in the lease means that in all cases, they still have to pay for the lease?
I don't know, that's what I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I understand.
Purely because they've asked the question, they've asked it.
Yeah, of course, that's why.
Question, they haven't asked it, would you buy it?
It's the same question?
Sorry? Sorry?
You're all fine, you pass the same question?
No, some of them have, but because they're all lease holders, you have to treat everybody equally? So it's only they, it's the scouts and cricket and bowls, isn't it?
Not great, it's a different entity.
But I would put wording, I would still put wording in there in, that, you know, it remains payable.
Would it work if we said we want a detailed impact statement? You know, financial impact statement? Because, you know, the point that Michael was making, if anyone, because of this, has, you know, is then walking into financial difficulties, it wouldn't be the greatest optics if we kind of, you know, pressed them and ended up causing, you know, business to go out of, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that they're a club, but when you each have them equally, that's.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I don't know, it's a hold on.
Yeah, I know, I know. I mean, perhaps it's because it's so happening.
And the cricket club, there's still charges in their members' membership?
I don't know.
Well, hang on, can we just, can we just focus on the lease element of it? Because, I mean, the scouts have paid in full, they're full annual charge.
No, not the storage part on that page, and then each turn over the values of leases. So really, what you're concentrating on is that it's three on the backs of scouts, cricket.
And all three of them, so the cricket club is basically awaiting direction on the office. The bowls club is doing the same, waiting for direction.
But the bowls club have paid, they've kept paying. The cricket club have asked the question and I think the scout club as well. And the cricket and scouts have only paid, are paid. I mean, it seems that true, the leases are very, very heavily touched upon already.
Yeah, and that's why I'm very, very nervous about seeing man saying, just pay twenty five percent during a period of government.
But it's just a suggestion, you know, it's to get the conversation going.
So in my mind, I would much rather this was kind of worded along the lines of it always remains payable when, you know, if you can't, if it had been directed, closed or whatever because of the, because of their government directive. But then if we're instructed as a local authority or a council or whatever, by the government, by the community, communities and local government, the secretary of state, communities and local government, if we're then directed by them to turn and saying, you waiver all your lease charges or, you know, community groups and things like that, then kick it up to government. It's their lockdown, they impose the position on us and follow their directive. If they haven't applied for local authority discretionary grants, you say, all you have to do, they have done it. I'm sorry, it's not real, or you should turn around, you have twenty five percent off. But Rachel rightly said, we have a substantial number.
Can't we just say that, well, we'll view it the next time anything like this happens again?
Well, I think it's about making, actually receiving charges now.
Yeah, it's knowing what to do now, because potentially, I guess, if we went into a higher lockdown or things changed, we could have to shut all our sites again. And then, like the scouts who were thinking of coming back, the cricket club and the bowls have finished for the season, so they're not going to be impacted for the rest of this year, but the scouts potentially are.
So I, I think, so Terry, Brett McPong, you were saying about the rigor around these existing leases, are they not rigorous enough to the point that we'd expect them to still be paid if people aren't using those sites? Because I mean, I'm thinking, the lease is rigorous and the lease is there and the lease is a binding document they've got to pay money against, then the lease stands and we should pay, pay as undercurrented lease. So unless, unless that isn't clear with the leases, I'm kind of struggling to see what the point is.
So that's me, or Terry?
Well, I think Terry raised a question around the rigor of leases and their lease being there anyway, so it's always to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I'm, I'm very much in the same opinion of. So unless these leases are written in a way that they do not work in our favour and they're not advantageous to receiving money in times of periods of gong through, I don't understand why the lease is at a point of challenge where someone can turn around and withhold the payment or ask the question and not pay now.
No, I don't think payments have been withheld, I think it's just where in lockdown and things like that, they have not got to their finances, so, you know, sort of different people haven't got together to sort of authorize the payment. I think that's all it is, but I don't, you know, they're not done in that sort of balance and how you pay it. It's something like that, I'm, I'm still.
And the previous, they had their membership, they paid all their membership, you know, and I'm going to say, well, let's give them a notification, they're like, give them a permit. But they had plenty of options to get a government grant.
But that's, I mean, that's kind of.
Well, it's been written, I don't know, that we, the major states that are existing with the, that's what I like.
Can I, can I just ask one last thing? Is it possible to work out the financial impact of the, if that was agreed? The twenty five percent, you know, the suggestion, if that was agreed, what would the actual financial impact be? Is that, is that a figure that we could get?
Well, the cricket club are about the twenty five percent, so I don't know what their usage has been at the moment. We don't know what usage the scouts are going to make. So, I mean, on that report, each of the lease amounts are on there, so the scouts are by seven, seven, three. So that would be a drop of four, three, two, nine, so, yeah, you're looking at about fourteen thousand overall across all three. And that was it, all three were paying twenty five percent.
Yeah.
But that's not going to be the case.
We're not wanting it to lose out.
It's the last, yeah.
When you put it in financial terms, it actually does concentrate the thinking really then, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So I just think it's the government, if the government wants to impose a lockdown and then the government want to pass some of its financial strain to that, so. Why would you be a buffer? I'm sure there's people in rental accommodation part and I've got their landlord and say, I want to stop paying or pay twenty five percent of what I owe you, because the landlord would be like, well, how do I pay my bills and pay everything else off? So right, that's the thinking, it should go to all those front facilities of the. And then what I'm saying, if the government, day to day, wants to turn around and say to local authorities to rent spaces down to community organisations, say, you know, we're going to direct you to waive all your lease charges, then let the government do that, so be it. But that's, I mean, this is a way above our heads and we should just continually to manage our financial situation at our state, which is these leases need to be paid or we find someone else to occupy the space.
Yeah, and as Tony said, you know, they have the potential of claiming grants and things and if they haven't, unfortunately, that doesn't really then block over into being our problem, does it?
The radio, it could also apply for two percent loan as well.
We're not reducing the radio, they're still renting throughout there.
The radio are paying, paying.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
They, they understand, they're all situational people. So you propose, so maybe the lease has a bit, but.
It is a legal requirement.
Yeah, so at least it should be paid for harvests.
It would be nice if the crystal ball and three of the girls.
So do you have a second before, Terry?
We're going to go back to the people, so, I'm, sorry, to the club, so. And I think, I thought, as Tony said, that, you know, they kind of get grants from this and the other, so.
Well, I mean, the bowls could come to town council for grant funding, if they wanted to repay more in dire straits with having paid them. As could the scouts as well, and the cricket club there, you know, they can apply for grant funding through us, apart from whatever else they can get from anyone else, yeah.
Right, do you have a second of the, uh, ten proposal?
Do you have a second with Michael, do we make this, they just go on a lease?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second with Michael, Terry, all those in favour?
I am, I'm just trying to do my.
All right, so that's three in favour then, against? Abstentions? That's two abstentions, John in there? So John's now on the meeting, so I would say, what way, John voted?
Shall I give him a quick read?
Um, well, it's carried anyway, Terry, so.
Oh, okay, fine, yeah.
All right, so that's, well, that was eight point eight. Eight point nine with the under training, eight point nine point one with the adoption of undertaking. We repay costs incurred in profit, and that's that, we have the S P C, and we deserve a.
Pretty good, yeah.
I know, it's a good one, unless we need to go for it.
No, it's just to say that obviously, when we took on one of the, our newest member of the finance team, the idea was that she would then be trained up to be able to support Rachel. Unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond anybody's control, that actually didn't happen because she spent a lot of time learning the booking system and then she was just about to start really working closely with Rachel and then fortunately, Rachel was no longer with us for a while and so.
Well, we had to, we had to arrange her head, you have stage.
Yes, we've done her stage courses and she just had to end the course on the final stage course. But then to be able to actually go on to sort of looking at accountancy and bookkeeping and.
It was eight point eight point two, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, at the moment, it's an overview of what, what it is behind. So because the course is so expensive, it does make sense to have an undertaking which we've never had before, or, so this could be for anybody who would want to do the work, you know, a senior.
So if you're willing to institute that, they pay that money for it.
This, yeah, so this, this document is the one that South Coast Council use for their trainings, so. But it's proportionate over the time and, yeah, I'd say, yes, three months they pay for them.
Mike's the person, I second that. All those in favour? What, you look quite unanimous?
Terry, Terry? Terry? Terry, sorry, I had an urgent call, an urgent comfort call.
Oh, I didn't think of that.
Oh, I'm really sorry, I did, I, can you just give me a quick rundown of that?
Eight, eight point nine point one is the adoption of policy that basically, um, when, uh, staff in the SDC unpaid training, there is a mechanism they need even in a certain period of time, that's to be paying costs from them.
And we're following South Coast Council's, like, doing things.
Right, okay, fine.
Okay, that's the answer. I extremely agree with John's comment.
So, I think, yeah.
Well, is it actually a question, isn't it, Chris, that you can, yes? Uh, eight point nine point two is the proposed counter break for another finance team.
So this is talked about in the, um.
So this, remember, the finance team has, has, um, and then is keen to go on and do an accounting level bookkeeping in sort of course, um, which will put you in a maybe better position to be able to support Rachel and.
I'm happy you proposed it.
Just the AAT account to train the course, but they don't mention the way the cost is.
Yes, stand at the bottom, at the, at the bottom, at the very bottom.
Oh, actually, I was gonna give you a, that's the number, yeah.
No, yeah, so that's the cost of the course, that's why, as I say, we wanted this undertaking because it's quite expensive.
Right, it was all on the bottom of those, but again, just being too.
Oh, sorry.
Full headline, underline, didn't it?
Yes, there is, you're right, that wasn't, yeah, sorry.
Hang on to a second.
So, sorry.
I must say, Simon. Seconded by fat bros and things, we, all those in favour?
Terry? Yeah, it's okay, I've got, I've got it now.
Uh, just so you know, I, one of the budget increases, um, accounted for that, so that's already been included in the forward plan.
Thank you, Rachel. Eight point ten is quite appropriate for the surface of Harcourt's Jubilee Centre, so we're going down there. Going back to June, but then.
I, I'm trying to find my report here, apologies, I've kind of moved back in the office and, and that. Yeah, you have, I did send out the updated report to everybody and for people who are actually here, um, it is tabled. A hard copy of it, so I sent that out earlier on because we've got the extra voting. Okay, this, this sort of came about from the netball, um, clubs actually complaining that the surface is, um, very slippery. Um, I obviously came in February and didn't know what maintenance programme was already in place. Apparently the, um, Harcourt's surface areas haven't been done since about two thousand and fifteen. Um, and they are in pretty poor condition at the moment, um, they do need some work done quite quickly, uh. I haven't managed to get total resurfacing well, apart from the very bottom one, um, post, which is what something, well, something I was trying to get in before this meeting, but unfortunately circumstances, I wasn't able to, so what I have here is what was quoted from each company, the top one highlights, um, preparation, um, to include two pickleball, uh, lines as well, the markings for pickleball courts, which is something that Sharon pointed out that we needed to get, that would be a good idea to get. Um, the apology, it's quite a short report for me.
And does, one question, Remen, if we move ahead of what you suggested, does the soft surface quote come down because we've already had the reformation done from courts hall?
Sorry, I didn't understand that. Yeah, I, I think it, it probably would do, yeah, Michael's saying, so the, the soft surface company quote is to, to essentially clean it and do the base it and then cover it, isn't it? So if you're, you're saying that if we've already had some work done previously, then presumably the work to actually resurface in the end would be cheaper than the ten thousand? Uh, but yeah, I would thought so, I mean, I can't obviously guarantee that, I'm not that confident, um.
It would be logical, yeah.
Would it though? Would it really be logical? Because if, if you just cleaned the surface and then you're relaying the surface, why would cleaning it prior to that make any difference?
There's clearly a penalty in the second one.
Yeah, to resurface would mean removal, I would imagine if some of the surface, so they would take a top surface off and then they resurface and then remark out, um, the actual top surface. I don't think cleaning would come into that, I think they would, like I said, remove the top surface and then do preparation for resurfacing. That's what I think as well. Yeah, so it might actually not achieve that cost benefit.
Question, Matt, um, uh, this, uh, uh, court school services, absolutely all three quarters. The, the, I mean, this, the, the soft surface, continuing, is that for all three quarters?
Sorry, sorry, which one, Cody, is that the second one down or the?
That's the dangerous one, do you need to go, do you need to go later?
No, you, you've got that, uh, the extra report is tabled. It was on your, on your table, the, the quote is there. Can I check that, can you, because there's one here.
The top one is three quarters. Three quarters. And the fourth one, that's a book. Are they all along three quarters, Phil?
Yeah.
Okay. It wasn't a thought that we used, uh, needing, that one of the calls could be a case. They, they didn't slightly, I mean, and, and then made that into a local service, the cost of doing that would be approximately thirty grand.
Thirty, yeah. Yeah.
Now, the question we are raised at one of these meetings was, are the existing courts they use their plastic? I think they answered no, um, so therefore we don't want to, uh, edition court, which I think would possibly go tight and, and, but we could possibly use one of this one, whichever one you've got there, to say, okay, let's do two of the courts to add to whichever one you and to, uh, spare. And then the balance of that money could go perhaps towards the local service? Because we can't put them on the surface through netball, it's not allowed. So you want, then you do go for. All right, finish that again, Benny. The, for, we can't put a mother type surface on netball.
No, not that.
By whom? Netball, it's, it's not good. But, um.
They won't play.
No. No, it, it's, it's, um, it's some building of their accommodation, they can't use a, um, a local service. So, well, I was saying, if we're going to connect the model, take the effort on ten page, you could possibly use like three bit of that on to the most, the popping, a local service. The wider court. If, if you're, if you use the second one, sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety. Would that do, that very small quote, would that actually suffice? No.
No, that's just cleaning and preparation of moth killing of the actual site, that wasn't to include, um, relining, remarking the, um, the areas. And that would actually deal with the complaint, wouldn't it? As you said in your report, that, that would be, that, you know, we could do that and then later look at the, you know, the clarity of the markings and all that sort of thing. I think that's what I.
Yeah, I mean, I have.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
No, no, I, I always, I always initially just to say that, like, I think that's what you said in your report, but and I agree with that, and I think that's what we could do, that we should just clean it, as long as that addresses the issue, you know, the issue at hand, um, and, um, then when we're in a bit more of a sort of stable situation, um, you know, financially and, you know, environmentally, then I think, um, we should just consider it again.
Is that valid, wouldn't they be? Top quote is five and a half for resurfacing, remarking, tennis courts and giving you pickleball courts? Rachel?
Just, um, just so that, um, members know, in our reserve, we have got eight and a half thousand reserved specifically for the court resurfacing because we knew it would come up since the last time, so there is that money there. We have also got some, um, some money in the Jubilee Centre Ground Maintenance, but, uh, that reserve is specifically there for the court resurfacing, but it, it is eight and a half thousand. So I wasn't sure if that top quote was for the resurfacing as well.
I just remind them, that, I get one bit secondly, the cheaper and kind of just deals of company, but I'm looking at like what's, what we get.
Yeah.
The two thousand two hundred is five thousand five hundred, and it's like, to me, it looks like the five thousand five hundred, yeah, far more brown money than we're getting, we're just spending two, just under two and a half. You're basically, halfway, that's more, that's more, that whole resurfacing report. Resurfacing the three court, remarking and giving us the pickleball court marking, so deals the pickleball court issue, or not issue, but, you know, the request from.
Yeah, to have the anti-corp mark.
It seems like we're getting like not only two birds, one stone, like three, maybe four.
Well, and especially that I just just mentioned about the fact that that's already earmarked anyway.
Yeah.
I, I've just thought that, I think the ground maintenance, that, that, we have meant about thirteen thousand left, um. We have got, I, I know that we have entered season after the football, um, you know, sort of repaired and what have you, but it's time to take place in, sort of, um, or they used to, uh, all the central march at the rear end, but, so, there is money there as well.
I personally would like to compare it with the first grade, I thousand five fifty nine six eight, and do the resurfacing as it comes in under allocated reserve for it.
Also, Matt, like, do we need to do all three? If we're looking at the mother surface on, on a.
Well, I think when netball play, they use all three courts, don't they? So it would be difficult for us to just do two now.
All three courts, we can't, we cannot build a local service in the third court. That's one way you, you say, that's a little, it's all in your court.
I mean, the mother is, is dependent on getting external grant funding anyway, so it's, yeah.
It's gonna be a way off.
Yeah, it's gonna be a way off, isn't it? So, yeah.
We only got five thousand dollars back.
Yeah.
I've got a proposal, I second that, so do we vote in favour of what we propose, which is going for, or I propose to go for five thousand five hundred and nine?
So the Jubilee Sport, might measure.
Terry's in favour, Mike's in favour, I'm in favour, John's in favour, so it's bad. And, uh, against? Abstentions? Right, so all of the numbers, I'm not what?
Very much.
So Sharon, that's number five, three oh eight six.
I was gonna ask you what that number was. Yeah, oh, six, thank you.
Four six dash three oh eight six.
Yeah, oh, six, yeah.
You need to go through again, uh, the mother court. I thought, you can't look from this.
We had, um, and we got in, um, the, uh, or he's doing more times. And we started in scratch, seemed to be the best way.
Yeah, I go, I go, I go. But I'm also, you need to get, you need to get in the balance.
Okay, I'd say eight point eleven is the biggest bill in terms of payment. I'm just gonna thank you.
Yes, it was updated, so you've got an updated one on the table, it was just that the, um, H M R C P O Y E figure was incorrect, it's actually, instead of six, five, seven, six, point six one, it was six, two, nine, eight, point four zero, so then that takes the, um, salaries totally down to thirty three, four, six, five, six, one.
That's a pleasure, Remen. Uh, any of the payments upfront payments, will it even matter?
I missed that.
Are any of these payments upfront payments to any contractor?
Not that I know of, upfront payment.
Yes.
Well, payment before they do the job.
I, I, I very much doubt that, uh, the only one I think would be is the B S one fire and security, the all sites annual security shuttles. We pay for the year then and then that's, um, we don't pay any more during the year.
What, what we did do in April and March, February, that, they upfronted the contract, twenty one, twenty two, payment. They're right.
What was that for?
You know exactly what it's called. It was a contract that the, the leisure fund, they were handling then, March, July. The, the, the contract was more possible, it's. And what happened, what, the act was.
The actual.
Did it come with practice that we could learn, or was it, that was just a wrong off?
Oh, A one is it? So that's the annual charges for the site maintenance that we pay.
It's enough.
Is that that one? Yeah, yeah.
Or you can then, you can pay the cost in that thing? A bit of practice that we should talk.
But I need to monthly payment.
We shouldn't be paying contractors, that, uh, certainly you told your payment bank, but, Frank. Well, did it go western, actually?
But I think we've already agreed in the, so, plans were something to look at. Contacts and things going on by the meeting, so, so if the bills are, I said it before, it's on the table. Does anyone have any questions about what's tabled?
Sadly, as a councillor, as councillors, obviously we would then put them. If you agree on that, because we've agreed it. No, that's a stuff that we should discuss at the next quarter. That's what's on the agenda.
Well, is that going with the review of the, um?
I just thought that would be, you were talking to my.
Yeah. Of the, the contract.
Anyone to pose a, that, that.
I just want to say, it is a really good point though, because I think, you know, where else do you get a situation where people get paid before they actually do the work? Normally, they do the work, they invoice. Hmm.
Uh, yeah, I, I, uh, but that's not the end of the article, so.
I was just making a comment to.
No, 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 I, I agree, I, I agree, having just kind of discussed it.
And I mean, as far as I'm aware, these things, the natural agree, the ones that, that have been paid annually, have been paid annually for years, haven't they? And. Now, uh, yeah, now you say it, uh, but councils have, nobody said it before and we've just ignored them and gone on and done it.
No, no. So, yeah, maybe.
That is a point.
That's what means financial accident, that, that the most likely time we pay monthly.
Yeah.
I think it would come to start. Pay monthly, that would seem more logical.
Yeah, absolutely. Because it's quite, I mean, there is stuff that we do pay monthly for, I mean, like the, the community festival is, is spread over the whole year.
Yeah.
And the cleaning is done monthly, isn't it?
I thought you had the monthly.
For what?
The, um.
No, it's paid monthly, monthly.
But he's getting paid before he does the job.
Yeah, but he's, he starts working in the September, so he gets paid from September through to July. So we've had our first planning meeting, so then he goes on.
Fine, then. We'll get a report from him on that, if he pays his bill, he's actually paid, so we're actually getting, we're actually paid for.
You could get work rate and such, things like that. That's not unusual with public finances to have those things provided, this evidence, this forms. Anyway, just conscious of what's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually paid, you said, you're all sitting like that. But I hope all that would help with all those points, seeing what we have through some support packs or subsequent planning proposals or say. Do you want to tell, pardon, what the? Right. Any proposals for the monthly expenditure? Anyone propose the monthly expenditure then? I'll propose the monthly expenditure then.
I'll say them then.
If you'd like to vote in favour of monthly expenditure then. Terry?
Yeah, sorry, I'll squish my screen down, so let me just go and actually.
Back away, that's.
No, no, no. I'll squish it.
I see now. Right, the hour is to further their meeting, the next meeting is Wednesday, the sixty, December eighth, we found you in plenty. And thank you all for turning up this evening.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you, Sharon. Bye.